Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Winston Board of Selectmen, Monday, October 7th, 2019, 6:30 PM. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone, audio or video recording this evening? Thank you, seen and hearing none. We will move on to selectmen's comments. Mr. Ward, let's start to the right left today.
Okay, I'd like to just remind everyone of the annual Senior Wellness Day at the Old Murdock Senior Center on October 23rd, 9:00 to noon. There'll be representatives from various health organizations, and so if you're a senior, if you have seniors for parents, or you're going to be a senior, you need to be there to get all that information.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
First, I think I would like to thank everybody who came out for Mr. Gould's dedication at the Hyde Park gazebo. That was exciting. And the other thing I wanted to mention is just to remind people that when you go to the transfer station, please take the time, wash out your recyclables before you put them in. Make sure you're putting your garbage in the right receptacle, and your recycles in the receptacles, and your bottles in the right receptacles, because it's causing a whole lot of problems, and so we have to be a little bit more careful.
And just to piggyback to that, I was there this past weekend, and someone had mixed garbage in with their recyclables, so they had to go through the recycle container and dig it out, so a little more care. Thank you. Mrs. Salter?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of announcements. This weekend, fingers crossed the weather will behave, it is the Winston Fall Festival, Saturday, August 12th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Everything from music to food, fun for the kids, fun for everyone. Central Street will be closed off, lots of vendors. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. We've had really good luck the last couple of years, it's been gorgeous. Still looking for volunteers, if nothing else, for the pumpkin painting booth, an hour or two would be wonderful. If anyone could step forward and help out with that, we'd appreciate it. Also, Trick or Treat has been set for Thursday, October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30. So when you're out on the 31st, watch out for the hobgoblins and ghosts that are out there. Any public comment this evening? Yes?
Good evening, my name's Rick Luescher, Maple Street. Looking, seeking a little help from the Board of Selectmen and/or the Town Manager's Office. The town park on Ingleside is getting more and more usage all the time, and there are plenty of people coming out there with their dogs, but I get two things. A lot of people will say, you know, you should have your dog leashed at all times for safety purposes. I've seen instances where a dog's running free and somebody's getting out of a car and that thing bolts to that car, and they have no control. Of course, then the first thing I get is, there's no signs, there's nothing telling us that. Or I get the other thing is, why aren't there any signs? So I know I have a handout here that the Winston Community Park uses for summer solstice, and they use it for probably the Fall Festival, and on the back are rules. Is there a possible way I can get a bunch of these laminated so that I can put them at the trailheads, the entries, and stuff like that, so you don't get that kind of stuff, and then they don't say those kinds of things? Because it's constant.
Absolutely.
But it's getting used, that's the good thing.
Yes.
More people using the trails. I've labeled them, they're more defined, so you know that this red head goes that way, and the other one goes this way, and just trying to make it more viable, but we do need some signage. And it does say right in here, if you don't read all the rules or have all the rules, go to the website and get the rest of the rules that are there. You know, a lot of people, when they get these handouts, they probably just look at the map part and never flip over the back to see what's on there.
Yeah, no, signs are definitely a good idea. Maybe just give some thought also, is there anything else that we need to post, any other points of information?
I know the town council and stuff went through and gave them a list of things that should be up, but geez, what was that, back in May? It just doesn't seem to get done as quickly as it should.
Okay.
You know, even if I can get some of these laminated through the Town Manager's Office, I only need about 10, 15 of them to get up all over the place, picnic area.
Yeah, I'll talk to the committee and ask them if they'd like some laminated rules and whatnot out there. You know, if you'd like to be part of the committee, Mr. Luescher, you know, there are openings, and if you have a concern at that point about how quickly things may or may not be getting done, you would certainly have a voice at the table.
Yeah, well, I'm still a steward to the property.
Okay, you know, a voting member, if you'd like to be a voting member?
I know, I know.
You're more than welcome to be one, and you could participate a little bit more often in the meetings. So I'll check to the committee and let them know the concerns, if there are dog signs that need to get posted. When Public Works has an opportunity to get those ordered and get those installed, we'll certainly do that as quickly as we can.
Yeah, get them to me, I'd be happy to put them up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On that same note, are there just waste disposal?
We'll make sure that if we're going to put dog signs up, that we also have some bags and a place for the bags to be disposed of.
Great, all right, thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Seen and hearing none, we have no public hearings, we have no appointments, resignations this evening. So moving forward to our list of license renewals for the period beginning January 1st, 2020. Mrs. Daigle?
Madam Chair, in your packets this evening are two lists. They basically consist of the same information, just sorted differently for you. The first list is by company alphabetically, and the second list is by category, so type of license. Businesses could have more than one license, so I thought it would be interesting to see the different types of licenses and who has what. The lists that you see do reflect the increases that you voted last year, and we're in the beginning of this renewal process. Lindsay and I can't wait. If you have any questions about any of the licenses that are up for renewal, I'd be happy to answer or get information if you'd like.
I have a question. And I know you're just at the beginning of the process, but as they move forward in their process, by the time we get them in December to approve, does somebody actually go out to the properties and make sure that they're complying with the laws and by laws and rules?
Yes, ma'am. The police department visits each business, making sure their licenses are up, they check the Class 1, 2, and 3 books. The fire department and the building inspector also do a visit for their specific departments, making sure everything is all set, and the board health as well, the health agent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the board? So you'll be reaching out to all these people now, saying the time has come?
And is here.
And, okay, very good. Well, thank you very much. Moving on, we have no Board Commission Committee Department information this evening. New business. We have an update on Mabarty landfill closure on River Street. Mr. Hickey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce Bruce Haskell. He is representing the Mabarty property with their proposed landfill closure. As the boards may be aware, there's been at least one presentation in front of the Conservation Commission for the proposed landfill closure plan. Mr. Mabarty and some of his staff came up and met with town staff a while ago to discuss issues that would be, that may be arising with the landfill closure. I thought it might be worthwhile for Mr. Haskell to come in tonight, spend a few minutes and just let the board know, and the public know, what's being planned, what the timeframe is, so people are aware of what's happening and why on that piece of property.
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, my name's Bruce Haskell with Langdon Environmental, I'm the engineer for the closure of the former Mabarty landfill off of River Street. And as the town administrator mentioned, I just want to give a quick overview of what, why, what the project is, and then solicit any comments or answer any questions that you may have, and update of timing and the like there. I actually can, I'm trying to get the AV to work, I have a handout copy of the, I'll pass that around.
Thank you.
Paper copy of the presentation. It's going to be a quick overview. So essentially, this is the Mabarty pit that's located off of River Street. It crosses both sides of River Street. In a moment, I'll show you the aerial view of it, covering about 100 acres. On that area, on that landfill, on that area, there's about a 14-acre, a 12-acre landfill that was built in the 1970s and 1980s, and was ultimately shut down by a 1990 land court decision of the town, appealed and went through a process to do. It's an inactive construction demolition waste landfill that's been on DEP's database, and it's required to be capped in accordance with Mass DEP Soil Waste Management Regulations, much like the municipal landfill was required to be capped, you know, the same process, the same requirements there. It's about 12 acres of landfill, it was permitted in the 70s and 80s, and ultimately stopped operating around 1990. It had a very on-again, off-again operational path over its time that it operated. The approach we're taking to capping or closing of the landfill, or closure of the landfill, and landfill closure means the final stage of capping in DEP's parlance there, is under a 2001 Mass DEP closure policy, which allows the importing of what's known as grading and shaping materials, I'll talk a little bit about what those are, to basically to achieve the appropriate grades for closure, and they also generate some money to offset the costs of what DEP is requiring, both the construction of the cap and the long-term maintenance and monitoring of the landfill, which is the 30-year groundwater monitoring and things that have to be done out there. The grading and shaping materials are materials that DEP's used, and I've got a list of, representative list of some of the sites they've used them on. They're basically impacted soils, street seepings, catch basin cleanings, that need to go to a regulated site, and the testing and everything has to be done on them to make them appropriate for this use. They've been used at a lot of sites, there's been a lot of work done to prove that it's a safe application of these materials. Because they're impacted and they only have a limited number of sites they can go to, there's a tipping fee that's paid to take them, and that tipping fee pays for the cost of implementing the work that has to be done out there. The policy is pretty, is about a seven or eight-page policy that DEP put out in 2001 that dictates what happens on these projects. The primary function is administrative consent order with DEP, which dictates all the activities, the timing, the schedule, the types of materials, everything that has to be done with the project. The process is considered a landfill closure, you know, we're not proposing to restart the landfill, some of the questions have come up with the Conservation Commission, we're not taking construction demolition debris or waste, again, we're certainly not taking trash, municipal trash into the site, it really is a soil inert material kind of landfill out there. The other part of the approach, and based on some discussions, is the owners currently has a 40 round truck per day limit at the site for removing of gravel. Essentially, what they're proposing to do is just use that same 40 trips per day, that's already been approved under a special permit issued by the town ZBA, and the hours of operation, which are 7:30 to 4:30, which have been agreed to under that same existing special permit out there. And not, in other words, that will be the maximum number of trucks that come in and out of the site at any particular time. The project has several strict regulatory controls, and I just try to outline some of the things that typically come up when we talk about these projects. One of the key things is, there's a series of financial assurances that are put in place, both a bond to cover the closure, so once the project starts, and once the consent order is signed, there's a bond put up to say they're going to finish, in other words, there's an amount of money to finish. And the bond is held by Mass DEP, and if the operator fails to do what they have to do, they can pull the bond and finish the work themselves out there. And it's a more than adequate number to do that work, if they had to step in, if the state had to step in and finish it there. There's a similar mechanism, which is funded by actually cash in this case, to fund the post-closure obligation, so in other words, a 30-year period, you know, the owners are required to monitor and maintain the site, those are going to be funded by cash payments as the project goes forward. There's a review and approval of detailed plans by Mass DEP, those are some of the same plans that are being reviewed by your Conservation Commission right now, concurrently with that approval and process out there, for their jurisdictional areas out there. All the materials that come in are extensively tested, and there's an independent review of the types of materials and the soils and the sources, and it's a pretty well-worn process that's gone through that everybody's, you know, familiar with. In other words, it doesn't behoove anybody to send material to a site that's inappropriate, and there's a series of checks and balances that go place on that. One of the things to do is to try to minimize off-site impacts, obviously, you know, it's the residents and the roads there, and one of the key ones is the tracking of any material off the site, so there's a requirement of having a wheel wash system, which basically sprays the trucks out there. We're fortunate on this site that we have a fairly long driveway to the access point, so you have an opportunity, it's not going to track water, or shouldn't track water, out onto the site. There's controls for any kind of nuisance conditions, we are somewhat removed, you know, from the roadways and things, so we should be good on that. And again, the limits on daily trucks out there is something that we, you know, we want to put in place, because that's been determined historically by the town to be appropriate. The post-closure maintenance and monitoring ensures that we don't, you know, the site is maintained and taken care of for the 30-year period, and probably both beyond the way the policies, DEP policies work. And there are significant stipulated penalties if these things aren't followed, the DEP can enforce, and they're automatic in the ACO, in other words, DEP can automatically come in and say, hey, you're not doing what you said you would do, A, B, C, D, and they add up to hundreds of dollars a day per occurrence and can accumulate very quickly. And DEP does keep close track on any of these active closure projects or active projects that are going on. As I mentioned before, there are numerous landfills, there's probably about 30 landfills that have taken similar materials in. I just picked arbitrarily picked a list of probably about 12 to 15 here, to show that, you know, some of the ones that are done and have been done recently, and have similar volumes, or even much greater volumes, like the Greenwood Street landfill in Worcester, or Cottage Street in Springfield, were much bigger projects that were going on, and that are going on. And again, you know, different communities that have, you know, accepted these materials are now capped and closed, have gone through the process, or are in the midst of going through the process and capping and closing, both private, these are both private and municipally owned sites, you know, a mixture of the two. The community benefits of this project are really, again, a capped landfill is always, you know, it protects the environment, it's the appropriate thing to do, it's required by the regulations, and in this case, to protect groundwater quality to the Millers River primarily. The closure, you know, the intent is that this will be now a passive use type of site, either open space or some kind of solar PV field, again, to be determined, and with further discussions with the town and the owner out there. The owner has proposed a payment to the town of 50 cents per ton, which will generate approximately, conservatively, I would say $300,000 in total payments. Just there will be a truck weigh scale, there'll be a monthly report that goes to the town that says we took in X number of tons, 50 cents a ton is X, Y number of dollars out there. And that money is, we aren't tying, you know, proposing to tie it to anything would be totally at the town's discretion, and whether you wanted to use it for road repair, maintenance, or if you wanted to hire some third-party oversight person to oversee what happens out there, or to sort of confirm the work that's being done out there, that would be totally at the town's discretion, but certainly it's a significant amount of money for that purpose. With that, I can answer any comments or questions or comments that you might have, or get into more detail about something I've briefly talked about.
Thank you. One question, Mr. Haskell, as far as the material that would be brought in, has anything changed in those requirements since the town capped ours?
I have to ask, when did the town cap your landfill?
I think it was mid-'90s?
No, early 2000s.
Early 2000s?
So the primary policy, maybe I should just answer it from what, the primary policy that mostly these materials come in is called COM '97, 1997 policy.
Okay.
There was a predecessor to that, and they actually generally, it's generally the same standards, there was a '94 version of that. So in '97, that policy was in place. I'm not aware if you actually, if the town actually took a lot of these materials in in that, at 2001, I'm not aware of that or not, but that's the timing of the policy out there. The policy was put together for the central artery, frankly, to get rid of soils at that point, that was the purpose of it.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
I think I would just like to make a comment, and then maybe have a couple of questions. But my first comment is, for some reason, this seems to have sparked a lot of concern amongst the residents that live down in that particular area, and they have reached out to our state representative with their concerns. What, when you say impacted soils, have they been tested?
Yes.
Are there some kind of contaminants that could be coming in with those soils?
Yes, I could give a little more detail to that if you'd like, to what happened. So if I had a site, if I had an old factory site in Winston, or anywhere, okay, and I wanted to do some development on the site, and I needed to dig some soils out for my foundation and get rid of them out there, the first thing you do is you determine, you know, the limits of where you're going to excavate, well, first of all, you look at the site history, what was done there, what kinds of things happened there, was there something different that was done there that we might want to test for? And then you go and you determine what the limits are that you have to excavate, and then you take samples from those limits out there, and there's a sort of a frequency of sampling that's done that's very standard. Those samples are analyzed for a laundry list of parameters, so it's almost everything you could possibly think of, and if there's something else, like for example, you know, there were pesticides, or something, railroad track where pesticides might have been sprayed or something like that, then that's added to the list to see if there's an issue out there. Those samples are then taken to a lab, analyzed for those parameters, and those results are presented, you know, put together in a package and presented to the facility for acceptance. But inside of that, if the facility, if it's an old factory, for example, the licensed site professional for the factory, for this development site, is responsible to make sure those soils go to an appropriate, you know, appropriate site in the way Massachusetts deals with impacted soils. So there's a letter that's written with all the testing results, certifying that it's okay, it's reviewed by somebody at the receiving site, in this case, the former Mabarty landfill, and they would say, yes, that soil looks fine to be, you know, to be accepted. While the soil's being accepted, it's visually observed to be, does it have, come in with a lot of debris in it, does it come in, does it have any kind of odor associated with it? You know, there's some sort of telltale things, you know, is it stained, does it look different than what you would expect? So this soil should not have any of those things really in it, you know, based on the levels out there. So if it does, then it's set aside, tested, and at that point, actually, you know, they would generally stop taking deliveries from that, you know, that source site. So there's a pretty well-worn procedure for taking soils from a site that would be, you know, that would be implemented here, and it's pretty standard, been implemented probably in very similar manners in all those sites that I mentioned before.
Thank you. And then I have one other question, when, on your other slide, when you were saying that we could get a third-party overseer for the project, I'm trying to, I'm wondering, isn't the project already under the supervision of DEP?
It is, yes. DEP is already going to see all this information, you know, they're going to see what sites were taken in, how many tons were taken in from each site, you know, some, you know, information like that they'll see out there, and what the closure is and everything else. So DEP does have an oversight role, it's just, you know, again, some communities choose to have a third party because they're not boots on the ground, you know, they're not necessarily here, you know, as close to it as the town might like somebody to be.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hickey, any income from this potential project? Would that just go into free cash, or where would it go?
So that $300,000, or roughly $300,000, I don't know if it's going to be appropriated and have it run through the town meeting process, and if it did, we could do a couple of things. If we know far enough in advance when the project's going to start, and when they expect during that fiscal year the money will come in, and how much, we could estimate that revenue and offset with an appropriation. Or if it just, worst case, I guess the other scenario would be to close it to free cash and bring it to a special town meeting and ask for the appropriate amount of money to be raised out of free cash, to be used for whatever purpose the Board of Selectmen are recommending it be used for.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Would the payments be made ongoing throughout the process, or lump sum at the end, or how would that be?
I would assume they would be ongoing, I mean, I think we'd have to talk about the frequency of the payments, but typically every month, so every month, there's a report that goes to DEP that says, we took in X number of tons.
Okay.
I assume somewhere along that would correlate to some, you know, somewhere in that process, there would be, you know, that would sort of create a payment.
Sure, okay. The 40 trucks round trip per day, you mentioned 7:30 to 4:30, just Monday through Friday?
Yes.
No weekends?
That's the intent, yes, that's what the current permit allows for.
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
It may have a provision, you know, with permission of the town on weekends and things, I mean, the only exception would be if a hurricane was coming in and they needed to actually do something out there, but I don't, there wouldn't be trucks coming in necessarily out there.
Okay.
I just have one question, how long does this project take?
So the acceptance of materials is supposed to take about two years, except for the grading shaping materials, and then the actual cap will take about a year, and that may actually overlap a little bit out there, so it'll be about a three-year project is the intent, assuming all the materials are available and can come in during that timeline.
And I have a question.
Yes.
Who is responsible and who is going to pay for the post-closure maintenance and monitoring? Who does that?
So the owner is responsible to pay for the post-closure maintenance and monitoring, but what happened, in this particular case, DEP has said, give us, they have a post-closure financial assurance, which essentially is a cash account, for lack of a better term, that has the amount of money necessary to do that. So if the owner does not do that, DEP can step in and take the groundwater samples, mow the landfill, do repairs as appropriate.
So you're saying that they buy a policy, or you're saying they put that money aside in the beginning?
The money is aside for this sole, for that sole purpose out there. It's a, trustee holds the money, and DEP, if they fail to do it, and it's happened, if the owner fails to do what he has to do, DEP just says, give us the money, and they put it into an account, and then they hire a contractor to do what needs to happen out there, the things that have to happen out there.
Okay.
It's over $600,000 of money.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine.
I mean, you can imagine, I'm sure what you pay for your monitoring, over, you know, multiply that times 30, and maintenance and mowing and things like that.
Okay, and the other question I have is just, what's the access road to get to this property? How do they go?
There's an existing access road off River Street, that's what they'll use out there, and that's what's been used pretty much historically for the site out there, so.
Okay. So they will not be coming in and out from the crossing, a few hundred yards down from that main entrance?
There's a main entrance, existing main entrance, that's from the intersection, it's probably a few hundred feet north of the main entrance there, that's where they'll be coming in and out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just to clarify, if you could, Mr. Haskell, there are 40 trucks that are allowed per day, you anticipate about a three-year project out there, but trucks, 40 trucks a day will not be traveling in and out of that site five days a week for three years.
No, I don't believe so, no.
My impression-
My impression, my understanding, talking to Mr. Mabarty a few months ago, when they have material, suitable material, that they need to dispose of or relocate, and this particular project is the most appropriate place to place it, that's when they'll come up, and they'll, they may spend a week, they may spend a few days, what have you. But I don't believe they, the intent is to have 40 trucks a day, five days a week, for three years going in and out of that site, although they could.
Yeah.
I mean, no, that, I mean, no, that's, that's correct. I mean, it will be, again, when materials are available, as materials are available for that purpose.
Sure, okay.
And again, there, there is a desire to get this done as fast as possible for a variety of reasons.
Sure, okay. Anything else from the board? All right. I don't believe there's anything required from us this evening, but you definitely appreciate the, the updating.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the time and the questions. These are good questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, thanks. All right, next up, we have discussion on timeframe to allow commercial tenants to vacate a location. Mr. Hickey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I thought the tenants would be here tonight, so I apologize. I didn't follow up on this morning. But as the board, I think, is aware, the town, through tax title, took ownership of a property located at 8 French Street. The, the property is a former warehouse manufacturing-type facility. Hasn't been in full-time operation for a number of years. The project, the, the property itself, the buildings themselves are in questionable shape. That being said, what we learned upon taking ownership of the building is there are four small businesses operating out of those, out of the building down there. Our building commissioner went down, went down and spoke to some of them. I then went down with the, the building commissioner again, the health officer, and spoke to some of the owners. I've actually, I've met with three of the four owners. The owners, the three of the four owners that I've met with understand the situation that the town is in. They have operated out of that building in a very informal way for a number of years. They pay some amount of rent through one of the business owners to the former property owner. When the former property owner was the owner of the property, they also pay the electric bill for the property. I'm not sure what the rent was, and I don't know what the split is on the electric bill. In talking to legal counsel about what our options were, they said first and foremost, we should provide them each with a notice to quit. And that notice to quit was provided to all four of the property owners around the 17th of September, giving them a certain amount of time to, to leave the property. That notice to quit was, was provided to them with the understanding that the board of selectmen have to approve of the notice to quit. But we needed to start, at least start the process. So, in, in, in having conversations with a few of the, the members down there, businesses down there, their desire, honestly, at this point, is to stay until sometime next spring. I spoke to legal counsel, I also spoke to the board of, I'm sorry, our health officer and the building commissioner. And our council has, town council has provided me a copy of a hold harmless agreement, that if the board wanted to allow them to stay to, say, May 31st of 2020, they would be required to sign this hold harmless agreement, allowing them to stay that period of time, where the, it would hold harmless the town for any issues that may arise down in that building. That building right now has no running water, so obviously, there's no bathroom facilities, nor are there any fire suppression systems down there that are operational. The waiver would remove the town from being, from any responsibility because of the shortcomings of that building. The, the health officer did say that he would, he would like to see if the board wanted to allow them to stay down there, two porta-potties placed down there for bathroom facilities, but that would meet his need on a temporary basis. So, what I am seeking the board, the board's consideration on at this point is whether or not you want to allow these four businesses, if they were to sign, sign the waiver, the hold harmless waiver, if you would allow the businesses to stay down there until spring. Our legal counsel has suggested and recommended that we not charge rent while they're there to further complicate any potential relationship we have with those owners. The owners would continue to pay the electric, electric bill as they, as they have, splitting it amongst the, the different tenants that they have down there. And next spring, they'd be responsible for relocating, in some cases, a lot of stuff. You've got a pallet, excuse me, a pallet company on there that seems to have, be operating probably 75% of the, in the 75% of the space. I will say that particular property owner or business owner is the one business that has not been cooperative. If they don't sign the notice, the hold harmless agreement, I would suggest that, based on our notice to quit that's been issued, that they need to be evicted as quickly as possible. The other three, I know will sign the waiver. I'm sure, I'm sure that they'll do that. There is a auto parts, used auto parts slash repair business. There's another company that does some work with elevator equipment. And the last person does some auto repair stuff, but also uses it, I think, primarily as a storage location for his treasures, I guess I'll say. Some of those businesses have been there for, I know one in particular been there for decades. So, there's a lot of stuff that, that they would be responsible for moving when the time comes for them to move. They understand the situation that the town is in. My initial concern was that we aren't able, able to provide the necessities that a typical landlord would need to provide to, to a, a business or residence, meaning running water, things of that nature. In this case, with a business, a fire suppression system. But our town council has said that with this hold harmless agreement, the town wouldn't be responsible if, in fact, there was an issue down there, because they understood when they accepted the terms of this, that there weren't those, there wasn't running water, there wasn't sprinkler systems, things of that nature. So, based on his conversations with me, I, I guess I feel more comfortable that we aren't somehow holding the town at any type of a liability for somebody getting injured down there, and in risking, you know, the town's standing. So, initially, we were talking about sometime in October that they would leave. They've asked me, like, as I mentioned, sometime in the spring. Based on, like I said, my conversation with, with town council, I think if the board was willing to allow them to stay until, say, May 31st, that it would allow them the time they need to find other, another, another location that they could move to. They've also talked, honestly, about potentially buying the building from, from the town, a tax title, if we had an auction. So, you know, I think they'd like to explore that possibility as well.
Thank you. Thoughts, questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When you refer to "they," who do you mean by "they"?
There are four, the four business owners.
All four?
All three, I'm sorry. Three of the four business owners are interested. I have not had a conversation with the company that makes the wooden pallets down there. They have been invited to meetings. They, they were, they knew that we were going down there to walk the building with some of the other businesses. They've chosen not to participate. I spoke with a rep, an acquaintance of the owner of that business before the meetings we had with the businesses, made her aware that, you know, his participation is important, that we want to try to work something out with these individuals, and that his attendance and participation was important in that. He chose not, they've chosen not to come. The, the other three business owners have said that they think he may be, you know, packing up and getting ready to move out sometime in October. I don't know if that's true or not at this point. Like I said, he, he appears to be operating out of probably 75% of the property down there, so he is the major user at this point. So, that's where, that's where things stand at this point with that.
I, I feel like that, that one business makes me nervous about
Yeah, me too.
The rest of them.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's what I was thinking. You've got four. If three of them sign the hold harmless, but the fourth one doesn't, we're still responsible.
Well, he'll be, he'll, again, he's been issued the notice to quit. He will either vacate voluntarily, or he'll be, if we have to go to court to have him removed from the property, we will, we will do that.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
And what would be the date in spring?
I would suggest, I don't have a date specific. I was thinking, you know, you could do, at the end of one, end of a month, whether it be April, May, something along those lines. That would give them six, seven months to figure out what they want to do. If they're interested in the building, we could hold an auction. If they were the winning bidders, they would be the proud owners of a new building. If they weren't interested in an auction, then, you know, it'd be their responsibility to find an alternative location that they could then move all of their stuff out, and we could decide how we want to move forward with, with that particular piece of property.
My thoughts on this, number one, this, we're not in the business of being landlords, this town. That's my first problem. I feel terrible for these businesses. I can't get over there's no water at that property. And would we let any other business or any other property owner rent out the property and have tenants with no water?
No, and that's, again, that's, that's what I was saying earlier. You know, my concern was that we, there are requirements for, for landlord. Water, obviously, is one of those, that we aren't able to provide. However, again, the, the hold harmless agreement would allow the town to have the tenants stay in that property for a period of time without running water. Again, it's, it's not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, and I don't know when the water was last used down there. And that's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, how old is, that building's got to be, what, 100 years old?
At least.
Yeah. It used to be at a furniture factory.
Yeah, it's, it's
Yeah, levels. It's big, old.
It's a big old, it's a big old, it is, I mean
Yeah, the assesses, the field card is on here with a picture of it.
Built in 1850.
Yeah.
1850.
It was dangerous when the levels was there, so.
Yeah, the building, I'm sorry.
You know, respectfully to the town council, you know, having the hold harmless, but, you know, that only covers so much. I mean, clearly, if we know that is dangerous, and even though they sign off on hold harmless, if something happens, they're going to sue us.
They'll still come after us, oh, yeah.
And not just them, but if other, it's a business, if whoever they, they work with, if they have people coming and going out of there, we're going, you know, if something happens to them, they're going to sue the landlord, even though we're not collecting rents. So, I mean, do they have vendors that go there? Do they have even, you know, even if UPS goes there and walks in the door and something happens? You know?
Sure. No, I, I, and I absolutely agree with everything you said. You know, if you were to allow them to stay until the spring, it would be a, a very kind gesture on the board's part. I agree that the hold harmless agreement. I guess I'll, I'll put it this way. The town has deeper pockets than, than, than others, and if they thought that they could find an attorney who could take this contingent upon getting a percentage of whatever their winnings were, or the, the settlement was, they'd take it. So, is the town completely clear? Probably not. The businesses down there seem to be one- and two-person shops. There's, there's not a lot of activity, other than just the individuals who, who work down there. But, I mean, the, in my opinion, if you, if you're going to make a, a business decision and try to, try to eliminate the emotion of, of the four individuals who are down there, that decision is by November 21st, I'm sorry, November, yeah, November 21st, they need to be out.
Right.
That's the, you know, the decision, not worrying about what the four business owners have to deal with to get out by November 21st. You now get into the situation, how much do you want to take into consideration the challenge they're going to have to have to relocate before the 21st of November? And, you know, those are, that's, you know, decisions that this, this board has to make and weigh.
So, Keith, you said that, let me find that, I've got a copy of the letter that you sent here. Um, bum, bum. Oh, maybe it's in the notes. So, three of the four have said that they would be willing to be out by November 21st? Am I reading this correctly?
Three of the four understand, three of the four have, have been issued a notice to quit, were handed the notice to quit when I met with them. And while they understand that November 21st is, is the date in the letter, they would respectfully request that they be allowed to stay into the spring.
Okay, I do understand that. Mixed feelings, yes, I feel bad for them, but I think, for myself anyway, I think it puts the town at too great, too great of a risk. So, my thought would be, we let the November 21st stand. If in the interim, X number of weeks, one of the owners comes to you and says, you know, I need a few more weeks, seeing progress made, that they are moving out, then maybe on a case-by-case basis, we can give a little bit of an extension, but I, I don't think I would be able to agree to giving them till next spring.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have to, I'm, I'm wondering, they've got to be providing some sort of heat in the winter, correct?
No.
I'm thinking they've got some space heaters. I'm thinking they've got a kerosene heater. I'm thinking something, and this is a building with absolutely no way to put a fire out.
Yeah, well, it's February and, you know, it's below.
I'm sure there's not much insulation.
They got something.
No.
What I was told, and again, I, I saw nothing down there when I walked through the, the building, that showed some type of heating source. And what I was told by the one gentleman who has, I've spent the most time with down there, he tries not to be down in the wintertime very often because of the cold. But I can't sit here today and unequivocally tell you that they don't bring something in in the wintertime to try to heat the space. I don't know how they would do it. It's such a large, you know, warehouse or manufacturing building, but they may
Depending on where you're working, you just have it shining on you.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at
It just sounds so dangerous to me, and I think Chief Smith would have a fit. I really do.
Oh, I, listen, I, I think it's, it, it, there's nothing that meets code in that building, nothing. There is no, in my mind, I'm not an expert, but I don't, I don't believe it can be purchased and, you know, rehabbed, redeveloped. I think it would probably be something that has to be leveled and started over with, based on, based on the condition of the building. So, you know, it's, it's in tough shape and has been ignored for probably decades.
I just feel like the thought of them going through the winter frightens me, with, when the town could be
Yeah, now, now that the town's involved with it.
That was, initially, we had said we wanted them out by, you know, November 21st, to give them a little bit of time, yet, out before Thanksgiving and, and into the heating season.
Yeah.
And, you know, if they can't be out by the 21st, it's a whole process. I mean, it's not like we can walk in there and move their stuff for them. I mean, then there's other, at the land court again, and, because the tenants have the advantage in Massachusetts, absolutely. So, you know, even set So, you know, even setting that date, you know, what can we do? So, that, you know, even, and you think about it, too. If you let them stay the spring, there'll be something in spring, you know. It's just, you gotta cut it off. And I feel terrible, I do, but, you know, we gotta think of the town. That's what we're here for.
I agree. Anything else? Okay, so as presented to us this evening, it is holding to the dates in the notice to quit, which is they would need to have, they'll have an extension until November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, to remove all the prisoner property under the notice to quit.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board approve the terms of the notice to quit as presented this evening by, by November twenty-first.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're done with the fun part of the meetings. Special town meeting warrant. Assignment of articles. So let's just run through them. If there's something in particular that you would like to, you speak to on town meeting floor, just speak up. Anything that nobody says anything to, we'll give to Mike. No, just kidding, Mike. All right, starting with Article One, that is the Finance Committee, so they will move that one. Article Two, the revolving funds authorization article. I'll have to recuse myself on that because I'm part of the Agricultural Commission.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Article Three is replacing the water and sewer lines on Central Street as part of the reconstruction project. I'll do that one. Article Four, see if the town will appropriate the money for the design development for the upgrades to the fire department building.
I'd like to do that one.
Thank you. Article Five, under the financial articles, free cash, two hundred thousand for the upgrade capital account.
I'll do that one.
Thank you. Article Six, the Robbins Road capital account, to replace the culvert. Let me give that one to Mike. Say Mike for six. Seven, free cash to the Central Street capital account to fund our portion of the reconstruction project.
I don't want to do any.
You gotta do something here. Come on.
That's where you're wrong.
Come on, man.
That's right. We have people that like to, to speak at meetings. I don't care to.
I'll do it. Okay, obviously, I'll, I'm already, I've got the one for replacing water and sewer lines, so I'll take that one as well.
Oh, so you're doing seven?
I'll do seven as well.
Okay.
Because it ties, it ties into the same project. Eight, DPW materials account.
I'll do that one.
Okay. Nine, police station boiler replacement capital account.
I think Mike should do that one.
Okay. Mike for nine. Number ten, school department out-of-district placement account.
Is that us, or would that be school department?
I think the school department, wouldn't you?
Well, when I watched their meeting the other night, the superintendent did speak to it as, as it came, kind of from the school, through Keith, but, you know.
Yeah.
Keith, are you listening to us?
I'm sorry, I'm not. I apologize.
Honest.
I was looking for an article, I apologize, I'm sorry.
The article for the hundred and twenty-four thousand for the school department out-of-district placement account.
Yes.
Is that something that the school committee would move?
I think the school committee would move that, yes. I apologize for not paying attention.
That's fine. Eleven, the senior center repair capital project.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I just interrupt real quick? So I have an update for you. The engineering costs associated with doing the study is twenty-four thousand dollars.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, two-four.
Twenty-four K.
For, for the senior center?
Yeah, so the motion will, will read something about raising twenty-four thousand dollars on a free cash, just so you're aware.
Okay.
I can do that one.
Thank you.
Can you?
Senior Center, yep.
I'm with the friends, but there's no conflict there.
Okay, good. All right. Twelve is the wastewater budget.
I'll do it.
Thirteen, authorized vehicles to convey the property located on Oak Street. That is the, the two buildings.
I can do that one if, yeah, I'll do the thirteen.
Thank you. Fourteen, parcel of land on Maple Street, adjacent to the Winchun Community Park. I'll do that one. Fifteen, oh, this was just clarifying, anytime we remain closed on any real Saturday.
I'll do it.
Thank you. Sixteen, just rescinding some bond authorizations approved of previous town meetings for no longer Let Mike do that one. So Mike has sixteen. Seventeen, eliminate the grod.
Zoning to that.
Yeah, the planning, the planning board would do seventeen through twenty.
Yep. Ladies, did you get all the names?
Yes.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, moving forward. We are up to the town manager's report. Mr. Hickey?
Thank you. Just a reminder to everybody again that October twenty-third, the tax collector will be holding an auction on five different properties. Morse Ave, Nash Street, Hale Street, and Mechanic Street. If anybody's interested in any information about those properties, please see the tax collector, and she'd be happy to help you out with that. The fiscal two thousand nineteen balance sheet's been submitted to the Department of Revenue for review. We expect free cash to be certified as early as tomorrow. The fall two thousand twenty town meeting warrant will be presented to the Finance Committee on Wednesday, August, I'm sorry, August, October ninth. And I finished taping a TV show last week to better explain the, the articles at town meeting. That should be broadcast a number of times during the day between now and town meeting. Chief Smith and I will be taping a TV show tomorrow on the fire station renovation project that will be, be aired right after the, the town manager's update on the, on the, on the warrants. And the reason for that was to try to provide a more in-depth explanation as to what is being asked of the voters when they go to town meeting. So when they get there, they hopefully have a better understanding and appreciation for what the warrant articles are requesting and why.
Keith, if I may, are there links to that, like the website?
There's a link to the presentation that's done now on our website. I think it's on our Facebook page as well.
It's on Facebook.
So that was done, I think, today.
Yeah, so there's a link to the video right on the homepage, and there's also a link right up at the top of the homepage as well with the, the original presentation with all the updates that were made to the articles and, and the presentation just in similar form.
Great.
And you can also find that on Facebook.
Thank you.
So hopefully people have an opportunity at their leisure to, to listen to me drone on for thirty-eight minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I also say that, that it will be on Channel Eight and that the schools are, are doing a lot of work as well, that we hope to start improving our Channel Eight service?
Yeah, no question. The superintendent and I spoke last week. I know Barbara is working through the Communications Committee, and she's met with the superintendent, and she, she and I have had a couple of conversations, so they now have a, have a, a class that they're offering, and they've got kids out videotaping a variety of things. We've linked one of their latest video on our website, I think, last week. There was talk about even potentially putting, like, in school announcements, videotaping. They've got, they've got editing equipment and whatnot over there that they've dusted off, so, so there's an opportunity for us to, you know, to, to utilize that resource more so than we have in the past, so excited about that.
And on that note, the YouTube channel is Blue Devil Weekly, not devils, singular, Blue Devil Weekly. And if we get a hundred likes, then we can request our own short URL. So check it out on YouTube.
What's that?
Yes, thank you.
For people who may not, who may not have been up to Lincoln Ave Extension, the EPA has begun removing the former deal property, deal, deal building that the town now owns. They will be up there, the property's been fenced off. They've started removing some of the building. They're, at this point, they're dismantling it, putting in piles. Last Wednesday, the EPA received whatever court approvals they needed to access the former Alaska freezer building that has collapsed inside itself. So they'll be working, it sounds like, honestly, until it gets too cold for them to be able to use the fire hydrants to spray down the debris and finish up next spring. So they're gonna be up there now for a couple of months anyways before they, they finish up, but I, I can't say enough about the EPA and, and Mass DEP and how much assistance they provided. This project's gonna cost about two million dollars to, to, to complete. All three EPA money, there's some small money that the town will contribute. For example, they asked me to fund a structural engineer, 'cause we could get one out there quicker, to determine whether or not the, the smoke stacks that are out there and the, and the rooms that the furnaces are in are safe for them to abate. The asbestos ore, they had to be, they, they should be torn down. Ultimately, they were torn down, and the EPA will remove those at their cost, which is nice. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing process. We've been as cooperative as we can be out there. As I mentioned, the, there's a, there's a generator, there's an office trailer out there, there's an excavator out there. The police department's been asked to have some additional patrols out there because there are assets now. So if anybody up in the area sees somebody running around after the EPA or the contract of the EPA is out of, not working that particular day or that hour, please call the police department and let them know, and they'll send somebody up to make sure there's nothing inappropriate going on. The EPA also submitted to us today a, a, an update hazardous waste program that they're, that talks about the, the White Mountain freezer site in Winchun. That information's at the town, town manager's office. We've also posted on our website and on Facebook. So if anybody's interested in finding out, if they aren't aware, what the situation is and what to expect EPA to do, that's, it's about a page and a half, and I'd urge you to take a look at it. It's, it's good information to have, so we're thrilled that, and they'll be walking door-to-door up there in the area distributing these to the property owners and residents who live up in the area.
Could I also just mention that, believe it or not, lately I've been approached by a couple of people who are concerned about the, the demolition of a historic building, that it's no longer historic. The history's been long gone out of that building, and there is nothing, nothing worth saving.
No, I, you know, I, having spent a little bit of time up there over the last few months, there's some gorgeous old, they must be eight by eight or ten by ten beams, wooden beams. And I asked the gentleman from the EPA, is there any way that somehow those could be salvaged for some purpose? I don't even know why or what, but I just hate to see them. And he said that, sure, but, you know, they're contaminated with asbestos potentially, and the costs associated with removing asbestos from, from a porous material like wood would be, you know, so cost prohibitive that it, it just wouldn't make sense. So, you know, I certainly understand and respect people's concerns about historical perspective up there, but it is just nothing, there's just nothing worth saving up there that isn't potentially contaminated with asbestos or something else.
Right, unfortunately, yeah.
Just want to make people aware, we received a complaint last week about a door-to-door salesman soliciting residents to move to a, a different electric supplier, rather than National Grid or the town's community choice power supplier, Dyn Energy Energy Services. This gentleman goes by the name of Jared. He does not have a solicitation permit. We got, we got a call, Linda reached out to him, he answered his phone, thinking it might have been a, a potential customer in Winchun. Linda was her polite self and explained to him that he needed to have a solicitation permit when the board was gonna be meeting next, and he didn't want to deal with the red tape, frankly. So what he indicated to Linda was that he just wouldn't sell in Winchun anymore. I don't know if, if that's true, but I would ask anybody who has a gentleman who does not have a solicitation permit, whose name is Jared, to please contact the dispatch at nine seven eight two, two nine seven one two one two. They will be happy to go out and issue him a fine for not abiding by the town bylaws for solicitation. Thank you. Lastly, senior center, I am still working with the company who's supposed to go out and ensure that senior center are up with temporary repairs. I spoke to them, I emailed them last week, I got kind of a wishy-washy answer, honestly. I called them again today. They wanted to see the proposal that I received back this morning from Wright Pierce, not Wright Pierce, I'm sorry, from Ty &amp; Bond on the scope of work. I've sent that to him now, so he's supposed to get back to me later this week to let me know when they're gonna be out there. They initially had said they'd be out there the last week in September. It's obviously two weeks later and still nobody out there at this point. So we're trying to nail him down to get a better date so they can get out there and get that building secured.
Yeah, the weather's not gonna be getting any better.
No, it's not. And then lastly, the governor submitted some legislation to modify the education finance bill. What that, what that would do for Winchun, at least anyways, it would, is, from my understanding, it would fund all the, all the transportation costs related to out-of-district special education. I don't have a number for the board tonight on what that financial impact would mean to Winchun. It'll be part of the fiscal twenty-one budget, so it wouldn't be this current fiscal year. But I can tell you that the, the Winchun budgets are budgeted for special education transportation in fiscal twenty, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So it has passed the Senate, it's going to the House in the near future. If this was to pass, there would be some type of reduction in, in special education transportation as part of the fiscal twenty-one budget, which obviously makes things a little bit easier moving forward with that and, and that particular situation. So, you know, we've spoken to Senator Goby and to Representative Zlatnik about it, and they're both, they both, well, Senator Goby was in favor and did pass it. Representative Zlatnik is in favor of it and expects it to pass. So hopeful that that will provide us a decent amount of money that we can reallocate in some manner as part of fiscal twenty-one.
Yeah, that, that line has always been just a black hole. You, you don't know what you're going to need, and you have to cover it. So that was, Mr. Zlatnik mentioned that to me at Hyde Park, so that was good news.
I should have, I, I will have some type of an amount of the five forty-nine that is out-of-district transportation sometime within this week, early next. I'll, I'll have a conversation with the superintendent of schools, just to let the board know and the public know, you know, what the opportunity might be for savings here, but I think it's gonna be pretty significant.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager on his report? Okay. Moving on, we have one set of minutes before us this evening for consideration Monday.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Agenda, our next meeting is tentatively set for Thursday, October 24th. Correct me, I think we just left it if we have anything to talk about?
Yes. And to maybe expand upon that just a little bit.
Yep.
If we just had a couple of small things to address, how early could the board meet on the 28th, prior to special town meeting? I know we've met here once, to do a couple of small items, how early could we schedule a meeting on the 28th? It would be convenient for the board so we could alleviate the need to potentially meet on the Thursday before. At this point, we don't have any agenda items for that Thursday, but that could change tomorrow.
Speaking for myself, worst-case scenario, I could be here by like 6:10, myself, maybe, maybe 6:10.
I don't like meeting here first.
You do?
I do not.
You do not, okay.
You'd rather meet at the school?
Yes, because it's a traffic problem.
Okay.
Yeah. How early could you be there?
I can be there whenever I have to be.
Okay.
I can be there anytime, doesn't matter.
I'm like 6:15, like you, about 6:10 or so.
Maybe 6:15.
So we've got about a half, we've got about a half an hour of time, so 6:15, a quarter or seven.
Yeah, and if we meet at the school, then we won't have to travel, so.
We'll get a better sense, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Chances are, we probably won't have a meeting next Thursday, I wouldn't, at this point, it doesn't look like that, right? So far.
So, special town meeting, October 28th.
But it's not next Thursday, so Thursday after.
The special, no, next week we'll do the meeting, right?
Correct.
Thursday.
Thursday, next Thursday's the 15th. I mean, no, no, Tuesday's the 15th, so next Thursday's the 17th, a week from this Thursday.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I know, on the 15th.
I'm just trying to get winter behind me.
Anything further this evening?
Two weeks.
Now, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I get one of my dates.
Second.
Made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, adjourned at 7:41.